...our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We are going to do the public hearing of the adoption of the 2014 general fund budget, and then we'll get into our regular meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Greitop?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Samasko?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Here.
Is there anybody that would like to speak on behalf of the 2014 general fund budget? I have to announce this three times. Is there anybody that would like to speak on behalf of the 2014 budget? Is there anybody that would like to speak on behalf of the 2014 budget? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. We are going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Start with the pledge allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Greitop?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Samasko?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. Got items number A through D. D is going to be an update from an individual, John Monti.
Mr. Chair.
Howard. I would like to move that we have the following additions to the tonight's agenda. Resolution 1330 authorizing the SAW grant agreement with the Department of Public Works as item R-10.
No, 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 no. We're going to get these people out of here. We're going to do A1, A2, A3.
A1.
Yeah, let the people get the presentation, and then they can...
Okay, A1. And the professional service agreement with the jail medical services, St. John Mercy. I think that's very similar. You want to make that A2?
Yep.
And then, and then the following one would be considered A3, which would be the report from Stewart Bouvet and Whipple.
Let's see, update actually.
Yeah.
Stewart Bouvet and Whipple is already on the agenda.
Yeah.
The update from John Monti would be...
Yeah, they will become A3. And then last, and that is an executive session to review writ and legal opinions. And D, the report from Judge Monahan?
No, John Monti. Stewart Bouvet is already on the agenda.
Yeah.
Item, item D will become A3, so...
A3?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
(Laughter). A second on that.
You still have a second on that, Jeff?
So the executive session is going to be at the conclusion of the meeting?
At the conclusion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'd so move.
Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, the minutes of the previous meeting, item number eight.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the minutes of the October 17, 2013 commission meetings be approved and filed.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Item number six, proclamations, item number A recognizing Michael Clark with the road commission. I think you have that there?
Yes, I do. I'd like to read this first, and before we call them up, I'd like to approve the proclamation recognizing Michael Clark from St. Clair County Road Commission. I need a support.
Report. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
You want to make the presentation and call them up there?
Mr. Clark. Okay, this is a proclamation recognizing Michael Clark, St. Clair County Road Commission, whereas St. Clair County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize Michael Clark for his dedication and exceptional work with the St. Clair County Road Commission. And whereas Michael graduated from Crosslex High School in 1978 and from Michigan State in 1982 with a degree in engineering. He joined the St. Clair County Road Commission in 1986, currently serves as a county highway and bridge engineer overseeing the construction, repair, maintenance of the county's numerous bridges and culverts in addition to his work as highway engineer. And whereas Mike is respected throughout the industry as well as with the regulatory agencies, the M.DQ, his awards recognition include the American Council of Engineering Companies for the 2013 ACES State Honorable Conceptor Award and over 2013 ACEC National Recognition Award as part of the Wadams Road Bridge Over Black River Design Team. 1995 Michigan Army National Guard Acknowledgement Award, 2003 County Road Association of Michigan Urban Engineer of the Year, 2011 St. Clair County Road Commission Board Recognition of the Gibbons Road Culvert Design, which maintained its integrity through recent flood events. And whereas in his 25-plus years with the road commission, he has been lead designer and/or project engineer, manager, excuse me, as well as the county representative for many of the county's major projects. He's a dedicated employee, maintains a high level of professionalism, and is known for his consistent attention to detail. And therefore, let it be proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners on behalf of his citizens does hereby adopt this proclamation recognizing Michael Clark for his accomplishments within St. Clair County and extends our deepest appreciation for his distinguished service and urges our fellow citizens to join us with heartfelt thanks and gratitude. This is proclaimed the 7th day of November, 2013, signed by Jeff Bohm, chairperson, Steve Samasko, vice chairperson, Carl Tomian, commissioner, Howard Heidemann, commissioner, Dave Rushing, commissioner, Bill Greitop, commissioner, myself, Tom Riley, commissioner. Before I hand this to you, I have to tell you when this was brought to my attention about some of the things you have done. And in doing that, I started researching a little bit and asking questions, and I thought at first I was going to need a lot bigger board, because you are just one outstanding employee in what the people have told me about how you behave with your job, day in, day out, how you get along with people, and I have heard nothing but praise about you from management right on down to the street. You represent the county well. This board is extremely proud of you, and I think tonight was just a way to say thanks for being such a great employee.
I'd just like to thank the board for the recognition, and I have to say that I couldn't have done all these projects that I've worked on over the years with a great bunch of people I work with. The rest of the people in the engineering department, the other engineers and surveyors, and of course, our county board that allows me to have the freedom to do and be creative and be able to serve the county as I do. So, thanks again.
Thank you. (Applause).
Okay, moving on. Consent agenda, items A through L.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve items 7A through 7L on the consent agenda.
Second. Discussion on any of them? David?
Just one would be 7C at Casco Township, letter appreciating or telling us thanks for being at their township as we do our road show occasionally, and just want to give thanks to Casco and any other of the townships that do this.
Okay. Anything else on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Item number eight, report to standing committee. Bill?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. Won't take me long to go through this. Seems to be the week for recognition. The Central Dispatch, Tim Conger was given Director of the Year award for our Central Dispatch Director, so that was a real honor. His team, led by Tina Bricker, was a team that came in second place for outstanding work on a particular project, and that happened to be Superstorm Sandy when it went through. This team was, I'm 12 hours solid. They had a new guy in there that got his feet wet, and they handled everything without any glitches, any complications, no problems, no bathroom breaks, nothing. It was, it was a good piece of work, good recognition. Also, through the broadband system, Allison Arnold from our library and Jeff Friedland from Homeland Security received awards. And to top that all off, our sheriff was elected. Tim, is that, you're not president, you are director?
Board member.
Board member of the Michigan Sheriff's Association. So, I want to pay tribute to all those people that represented the county so well.
Okay, David?
I have nothing.
Tom?
Nope.
Steve?
No report.
Carol?
Nothing.
Howard?
Nothing.
Just one quick one. I did go to the retiree luncheon yesterday to give them some updates on the changes and some of the different things that we've done to them, and of course, there's 100 people in the room and everybody hates me, but I feel pretty good that they come in and shoot them straight, opening up for questions, answers. I know Bill Kaufman was there along with the girls from HR and stuff, and, you know, they've got the information, so it was, you know, we stay up on that. Going to move on. Citizens wishing to address the board. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, any unfinished business to come before us? Going to move into new business. Item number A1, we're going to start with Resolution 1330 authorizing the SAW grant agreement with the DPW. I've got Ken Forsen here from the... Ken? And then Kurt Weston. Kurt, anybody have any questions on it, first off?
Saw grant we're actually applying for is for a asset strategy or asset management program for the wastewater treatment plant that's shared with Elgin, Actley, and Ira Township. And what this does, it's a management program, 90% from MDEQ, to allow us to put an asset management program together to determine what rates we're charging down there and any infrastructure that needs to be replaced or taken care of in the future. You'll find a number of these relative to county. I know there's other municipalities that are applying for the same thing, but being the county board, as the owner of this facility, we're asking for this resolution from you. Actually, the landfill and the wastewater and the leach aid treatment facility there as well will be applying for saw grant in the same, same asset management program.
I just have a quick question for you, Kurt. How much money is this saw grant? I was in a meeting with Compton County today, and everybody was applying for saw grants. I mean, there was six people in the meeting, and they were all different people at different levels, I mean...
Yeah. There's a, there's a total of roughly $700 million available, but that's going to be spread out over several years. The first go-around is 92 million, and keep in mind, a lot of the communities that may be under emergency management or something like that will have first preference over these programs. So, there's going to be such an influx of communities that want to apply for this. We've been told it'll almost go to a lottery-type situation. So, what we're planning on doing, if you approve this tonight, we'll have ours put in by December 1, and then it'll go into that lottery that I spoke to. Now, the ones that are not successful this year will roll over to the next year. It'd be identical type of situation we have right now.
You have to apply again next year, or are you automatically in the pool?
You're in the pool.
Mr. Chair?
Howard?
I would like to move the approval of resolution authorizing the saw grant agreement.
Support. Discussion. David?
Just being at the Ira Township meeting, I guess they're also applying for saw grant in the amount of $1 million over three, three years. It's part of the same thing, which I talked to you on, Kurt.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item number 82, the professional service agreement with the jail services with Mercy. I've got Tim Donlin, and I've got Tom Bliss, and we've actually got Becky Smith, the president of...
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the Michigan Health Department Court Grant Program, fiscal year 2014, contract, any amount of two...
No, 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 no.
Not that one?
A2. Thank God, this is the, this is the jail services. I added on that. You guys want to talk about it? Or come up for questions, answers, anything? One of you guys make the motion. Howard?
Yes, I would like to move that we approve the Trinity Health of Michigan Service Agreement with the, for inmate medical services with the St. Clair County Sheriff's Office and Intervention Center.
Do you need to designate a monetary value, Howard, or... Annually?
That's correct.
Total value of 1 million? Not exceed? No, there's a...
Total value of 1,491,363.07.
I have a second. Support? Okay.
We have had this under bid for a number of months. I have Captain Bliss with me, our jail administrator, as well as Becky Smith, president of St. Joseph Mercy. We have been under contract for a number of years, trying to get our hands around the cost in the medical field and corrections. As you know, the corrections on the side of our building is the largest part of our budget, almost $10 million. Most employees, well over 100 employees in there, so it's very tough to try to check your costs. We had a lot of different contracts within our medical. We had pharmacy, community mental health, nursing. This contract ties up everybody into one contract with one point person being Mercy Hospital, St. Joseph. So, we were very pleased. Want to just make a comment. Dean Aldreis did a very nice job, worked very hard on that, as well as Captain Bliss and Becky Smith from St. Joseph Mercy Hospital. So, we think it's a good move. There's a list of improvements for, for very good care, and we are, hopefully can answer any questions you may have on the contract.
Just, just a comment, Sheriff. I forgot to mention it. This is for three years?
That's correct, three years.
And 13 days, so I think that... Comparison price to our past contract.
Want to touch on that? One of the problems that they had before, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you were dealing with a gazillion different service providers.
Correct.
Five. So, the coordination of the stuff was really, really dicey.
Exactly.
Yeah, I can. Roughly, I think we had several contracts. One with Port Huron Hospital for the nursing staff, one for the emergency services for the inmates who were taken to the hospital. We had, actually, when I came here, we had two pharmacy contracts. We now have one. Who am I missing? The community mental health and also an agreement with Ira Dental. What this, what this does, and what we're trying to do, as the sheriff mentioned, is, is trying to bring in at least, at least one... I have to reach out and touch five different people if I have an issue, and then if it crosses any, any borders or intertwines, then I got to play intermediary, intermediary, if you will, trying to fight the battles, and it just got to be kind of hectic. And if you look out there in the industry, generally, you try and get this stuff under one, under one roof. And what we essentially have done here is, with Mercy Hospital and help of Becky Smith and her staff, is to be able to bring that in. Now, you know, we're still going to be working with community mental health. We're still going to be working with advanced pharmacy through, basically, in a sense, through cooperative agreements with Mercy Hospital over here. So, we were spending, Bill's staff did a study on it, we're spending, I think, a little over $1 million on inmate care, which falls in that 10% to 12% of your annual budget for industry standard for medical services. So, with what we projected out would be spent on those areas, mental health and so forth, and with the contract with, with the hospital, fellas falling right in line with kind of even Stephen, where we think we're going to, I think, we're fairly sure that we can save some money this year, and that's in our off-site services. With this contract, where before we only had an RN in the building for four hours a day, we now have an RN in there for 40 hours a day, where we had a doctor in for one day, three-hour sick call, we now have for two days, two-hour sick call. We have telemedicine coming in through robotics. So, the nursing staff, the LPNs that are there, can now take the inmates in front of the telemedicine, talk to the doctors in the emergency room at Mercy, and be able to triage and hopefully keep people onsite. Because a lot of our costs were the transportation costs, the actual costs in the emergency room, and so on and so forth. They're also bringing in radiology into the building, so we can do routine radiology onsite, such things as ultrasounds and stuff that are not emergency. We can bring those, they're going to bring one of those units in to do those things that we can schedule that are not emergency. So, all these things where we're constantly sending people out of the building and out of the facility to take care of these things at a cost, we're going to be able to eliminate. And that's where our cost savings is going to be. Now, can I hand you a tangible number on that? Absolutely not. We don't know.
Any other questions?
Just, just one. Now, if, if we do need to transport someone to Mercy Hospital, will we get a special discount for their hospitalization there?
50% discount. I'll defer to the good...
53%.
Yeah.
53% off? Excellent.
Yeah, off the services there. Now, obviously, we say transport, that'd be the services once they're in the hospital.
I understand.
We're still on the hook to either transport ourselves or, or transport through... Try, not try, kind of try.
Try hospital. Try hospital. Any other questions for these guys? Bill?
Can I just, not a question, just a, just a comment. I, I want to commend, first of all, the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Donlin and Captain Bliss. This took a long time to put this together, and you spent an unbelievable amount of time, first, trying to define what it is that we wanted to do, the goals you wanted to establish, and then reviewing the proposals. And I was given today a copy of the, what I thought would be very simple bid tab, which the board is used to seeing on a lot of our contracts, and this is extremely complicated. You can't compare apples to apples because of the level of service and the type of service. But I think some of the, I'd like the board to realize and emphasize some of the things that Captain Bliss said is, is the real savings that the sheriff expects to receive from this is the fact that there are so many innovative programs that Mercy has agreed to bring into the Intervention Center and really reduce our costs of transporting and moving inmates back and forth to the hospital, to the emergency room. This should really help save a lot of expense and a lot of overtime in the Intervention Center, so congratulations.
Well, thank you, Bill. And again, just an excellent spirit of cooperation between purchasing and the sheriff's office, just like we have with the controller's office. You know, in the last five years, we've rolled up our sleeves and done a lot of work collaboratively with Bill's staff, and it sure makes things a lot more smoother. And as you can see, you know, a $1.49 million contract, jail medical care is a big, big business, and we're the 10th largest jail in the state. So, when we looked at change, we looked all over the country. We have vendors from all over the United States come over to our office and sit down, and Captain Bliss sat in countless meetings with all of these vendors, because this is huge business. Prison medical and county jail medical, especially when you get to be our size county jail. And when the smoke and dust all settled, St. Joseph Mercy was the best fit. And so, that's, that's good news locally for us as well, and we're happy to have this partnership.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Update, Mr. Monti. David, you want a little bit of background what he's updating us on here?
Well, I attended the Ira Township meeting on Monday night, one of the townships in my district, and this was presented, John did that, and I got very interested in it. I don't know all the specifics, but John will fill us in, but I thought this might be an opportunity for the county and the township to work together.
Give us the five-minute quick down and dirty, all right?
I will. Thank you very much for squeezing me in. I'm John Monti from Project Control Engineering. I'm the engineer for Ira Township. With Ira, you have a little plan in front of you. With Ira Township, had a vision of creating a park and an emergency access site adjacent to the existing DNR launch site that's on Anchor Bay. That site is located at the end of, took Palms Road right south to the water, just a little bit to the west, is an existing access site that is parking for fishermen and a launch for boats. What we did is the DNR owns a piece of property immediately adjacent to that. We surveyed that property, did a wetland review. Turns out, the property is 99% wetlands, so we kind of have our hands full of selling this project to the DNR. But I have a couple of experts that are working with us that really know what they're doing environmentally, and we're going to prove to them that the progression of the frag mighty on this site is going to continue to destroy the, the land that's there now. We're going to eradicate the frag mighty, the invasive species. We're going to improve the shoreline vegetation. We're going to improve the fish habitat. We're going to improve the public access by creating a park, kayak launch, and some additional parking, and we're going to provide some emergency access that can be used, a separate access that has a helicopter landing pad, and boat access, whether those boats would be for the fire department, Sheriff's Marine Division, Homeland Security. Anyone would be able to use those in an emergency situation. So, we've kept an emergency access separate. If you've ever been to this launch site during the wintertime, when the activities are going on, there's ice racing with snowmobiles and four-wheelers. It's amazing the number of people that are here and the traffic situation. So, what we're hoping for is that we can get a letter of support from, from you that will help us try to sell this project to the DNR.
John, does Ira Township own all of this property right now, or some of it?
None of it. It's all owned by the DNR.
By the DNR?
It is.
Thought there was a piece down that the county drain commissioner had his hands on.
He does. Mr. Wiley has a piece that's just to the east of this.
Okay.
It's not connected, but it's, it's close by.
Are they talking in terms of putting up some sort of a dock system that goes out through, through the water? Because that's what Wiley was talking about doing with his...
We are. We're proposing that as well as to put a fishing pier.
And that's what he was talking about. We're going to get together on this with, with this property, where you're going to do your piece and they'll do his piece?
Yes, actually, I've worked with, preparing a drawing for, for Mr. Wiley.
Okay.
And we'll try to coordinate however we can.
Okay, anything else? John, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Stewart Bouvet, Whipple.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. I think a month or so ago, everybody got a copy of their financial audit for the year ended December 31, 2012. I've been told to keep the presentation fairly short. Also in your packet, there's a handout. The audit report itself is about 150 pages, and we've tried to condense it down to about a 10, 12-page presentation, and I'm going to go through it very, very quickly. Again, you contracted our firm to come in to audit your financial numbers. This is Karen Shafik. She's the senior on your job for the last two or three years. She spends each day here while we're performing your audit. Your audit takes about 1,100 hours for us to complete. It is a very large job. We come in, we start in April, finish pretty much everything by June, get the report... We come in, we start in April, finish pretty much everything by June, get the report out pretty much by June, and then we still got some loose ends that we have to take care of. If you turn in just past the title page on your handout that was in your packet, there's something called the Independent Auditor's Report. Really, this is the only portion of the report that belongs to Stuart Boulay and Whipple. You have what they call an unqualified or unmodified opinion, clean opinion, and that's what you're looking for. Again, it's, it's an unmodified or clean opinion. There. If anybody needs an extra copy, we do have extra copies of the handout. Also, I have to report that you received the certificate, Certificate for Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting for, again, for 2011. I think you were informed about that. You submitted for 2012. We fully expect you to receive it for 2012. Takes them about a year, maybe 13 months to get back, to notify you, but we fully expect that you will receive it for 2012. It's, it's based on the year that you have audited. The next couple items, we're not gonna spend much time on. There is something in your report called the Management Discussions and Analysis. It's about a 14, 15-page letter that kind of explains to the readers some financial information, very summarized, but we'll, we'll skip through that. Also in your financial statement is what, there's basically two sets of financial statements. There's a commercial way of looking at the county, and there's the traditional way governmental units have always reported. And basically, the difference is, is you add the value of the buildings in, on the balance sheet as equity of the county, you add any long-term debt and so forth. We won't spend a lot of time with that tonight, but that is about four or five pages of the audit report, and it is required to get your unmodified or clean opinion. At the bottom of page one, you'll see the general fund had assets of $22,157,497. You had liabilities of $9,218,64, for a fund balance of $12,939,433. Now, on your internal records, that's kind of made up of three funds. Your, your general fund, as you budgeted earlier, the fund balance would have been Your budget incentive fund would have been $685,000, and then your developmental revolving is part of that of $2,009,000. If we turn over to page two, the operations of your general fund, your general fund took in a little $52.4 million. You spent $51.1 million. You transferred to other funds, a net transfer out of $501,000. So for the year ended December 31st, 2012, your general fund was to the good $774,353. Now, we've put a couple graphs in here, as I usually do for your, just to look at. If you turn to page seven. This just gives you a pie graph of the general fund revenues, and you can see that about 50 percent, exactly 50 percent of your dollars comes in, in the form of taxes. That was down 1 percent from 51 from the 2011 year. The next biggest piece there is charges for services, is 16 percent. Intergovernmental, which is state money and federal dollars, a 15 percent. You can see each of the pies. They stay pretty consistent from year to year when you're going through this. Page eight, gives you the same information on your expenditures. As you're well aware, the largest piece of your general fund budget is your public safety budget, about 40 cents on every dollar, 40 percent of your general fund budget is spent on public safety. And the next largest piece there is the general government, which includes a lot of different things. The classifications are determined by the Mission Department of Treasury. They tell that your administration of where something belongs in these classifications. But you can see it's pretty consistent from one year to the next. Page nine, just gives you a bar graph of your fund balance in your general fund from 2003 to 2011. You can see from 2005 to 2011, you steadily went up, and that's very difficult in these trying times. I commend you on controlling your budget, working real hard on the budget. I know your administration spent a lot of time, got some very sophisticated programs to estimate revenues and expenditures out there, but it's very difficult, and I do commend the Board of Commissioners on maintaining that fund balance. Page 10, also gives you a line graph, showing you the revenues and expenditures, and they are almost on top of one another. You really can't tell where the revenues and expenditures separate. They're almost close, exactly the same every year, and that, you know, that's, it means you have a very good budget. I mean, when you budget revenues, that's what you end up with. Back on page two, you can see just some 10-year analysis of your fund balance. I won't go through each of those numbers, but just for your information, the actual dollar value, again, your total fund balance in your general fund was $12.9 million. There's some, some of the portion of them are restricted or assigned, but you can see that on number four where it explains some different detail on that. At the bottom of page two, as you're well aware, you have a lot of other, what they call funds to control the activities of the county. On the bottom of page two, we just list the assets, liabilities, and fund balance. You'll see the parks had a fund balance of $1,774,000 as of December 31st, 2003. Your library had 2.5. Your senior millage had 537. Mental health had $600. On the top of page three, just shows the revenues, expenses, and other financing sources and uses. And you can see the parks actually spent this year $1,135 more than they took in. Just because it has brackets don't mean it's, it wasn't anticipated. You, you know, they build up money and do projects, so I want to caution, if it has a bracket, doesn't mean there, you know, that it wasn't anticipated use of fund balance. Going on the bottom of page three, just list all the other funds, your revenues and expenditures. I know you got a long agenda. I won't go through each one of them there, but you can see where you're at as of December 31st, 2013. Page four, just goes on and gives you the same funds, gives you the fund balance of those funds there. Bottom of page four, in addition, you have what they call enterprise funds. You have the landfill or solid waste fund, the delinquent tax revolving fund, the airport and the share fund there, and you can see the assets and liabilities. The net position is actually the equity, so the landfill has equity of $14.4 million if you were a company. The delinquent tax revolving fund, $29 million. Your airport, 3.9, and so forth. We turn to the next page. You'll see the revenues and expenses of each one of them. Again, you'll see the solid waste actually had a net loss of $1.1 million. I know you've been talking about that with your fees and what you're doing about that. Your delinquent tax revolving fund was to the good $728,000. You can see your airport share up and the other right there for your information. Internal Service Fund is just a fund used for controlling all your self-insurance, as you're well aware, your self-insured for your liability insurance, as well as a number of your health insurances, and, and that's what the Internal Service Fund there on the bottom of page five is for. Page six is the pension funds. You basically have two major funds, your basic retirement pension fund and your other post-employment benefit fund. Your net equity in your pension, the basic retirement system was $1,833 million. In the post-retirement benefit, it was $35 million, and you can see there was an increase in assets this year of $17.6 million in your basic retirement, and your other post-employment of $287,000, mainly because of a good year in the investments category. We also list there what they call the Report on Internal Control. One of the things for an audit firm, in order for an audit firm to do an audit, we have to take a look at your controls, and that, for an entity this big, takes a lot of time. You have a lot of different departments that we go out to, we have to take a look. And if we become aware of what they call any material weaknesses, we're required to bring it to your attention. Again, this year, we're happy to report there were no material weaknesses in your system, although there's a lot of decentralized processes. You try to do, have checks and balances. Your accounting systems are continually getting better each and every year we've worked with you there. The management letter, I think, is what they, is this audit communication letter that you have there. It just kind of explains some of the things I went through tonight, as well as, although there's some areas on there that we talk about, because we do go to a lot of different departments, maybe some areas that you should consider. We sat down with your administration for probably three or four hours, go through this report in a lot of detail, after they've already went through it in a lot of detail. We talk about each and every department that we went to, as well as areas that we may suggest that they just look a little bit further into. That's a very, very, very quick synopsis.
Any questions for Mr. Bailey?
Paul, the fund balance that we have, there've been some changes in the recommended percentage that we should have. Do we fall into that range? Where are we?
Yeah. You know, fund balance is kind of like your savings account for a person. I could probably ask every Board of Commissioner how much you can go into your savings account, and I'd get seven different answers, because, you know, one person may want to have one month, and one person may want to have six months. So there is no definite answer, and there is no agency out there that says you should have anything. With that said, the rule of thumb is somewhere around 15 to 20 percent if you possibly can. You, your general fund would be about 10 percent is that, 20 percent?
Twelve?
No, yeah, about, just under 20 percent, just under, in your general, would be just under 20 percent. So you're in, you're in that range. Yeah, you're right there.
On that page two, Paul, where you're doing the analysis of fund balance, the second to the last column going to the right, for the past two years, it's called unassigned. In the previous years, it's unreserved, undesignated. I think of this as the amount of liquid fund balance that we have, and a lot of portions of the fund balance are reserved for other purposes, even though they're large. We can't really use those for our own purposes.
Right.
And if we're looking at that, you know, in the last, since 2010, our liquid fund balance has dropped a million dollars.
Yeah. Part of the reason of that is you've internally financed some of the Drain Commissioner notes. It was a win-win situation. That, back on page two, under 2012, you'll see non-spendable $4.4 million. What happens is, is it's non-spendable because it's not liquid where you can spend it in the short term, as you had kind of just indicated. A few years ago, it was determined that it could be a win-win situation. The Drain Commissioner was outselling notes, paying fairly good interest rate in today's market, and your Treasurer's Office wasn't making anything on the interest. So what it was determined was, is, well, why don't we buy our own notes internally or finance our own projects? We therefore would have to charge the Drain Commissioner a little bit less of interest, and the Treasury, Treasury Department downstairs would, would earn a little bit more. So it was a win for the Drain Department, it was a win for your general fund budget, and so that, but it did pull $4 million out of liquid reserves. Now, over time, that'll come back in as the Drain Notes are being repaid by the property owners along the Drain Notes. But as you indicated, it is not all available.
I, I understand why it's a good investment in terms of the rate of return of the idle funds. I'm sure that we're doing well there, but still, we can't continue to lose a million dollars of liquid assets every two years if we start making others, similar types of investments.
Right.
I mean, you can have a big number in terms of fund balance, but if it's not liquid, you really don't have it there for emergencies.
Absolutely. It's got, you know, and, and that decision had to be made when they called in, and we would discuss the issue of you buying them. One of the things was, is how, how soon do you think you need it? And, because it does pull $4.4 million out of your liquid assets that's available for appropriation, and even just for cash flow purposes.
And I'm, and I'm not concerned about the level of the fund balance. I think the Bill Greatap's questions and your responses, you know, I, I'm very comfortable with it, but I think it's something we need to look at, because we can't, we can't continue to use that kind of vehicle, or we could potentially wipe out all of our reserve, our liquid reserve, and even though it is an asset and it's generating more than the other idle cash, if you will, we, we do need a substantial reserve for an organization like this, you know, and counter some, you know, tremendous meter allowance.
You definitely need liquid, you definitely need liquid cash.
Yeah.
Chin in on that. You know, when we did that deal with Bob at the time, we only went to, we worked through with how much monies that we would actually give to him. I know you guys crunched the numbers at the time and felt pretty comfortable that, okay, we could do 2 million bucks or 3 million bucks, whatever it was, because it was the old, we were getting .2 percent on our money or some crazy low rate, and the Drain Notes were at 3 and a, 3 to 3 and 1/2 percent kind of stuff. But we had, we had that same very discussion, we can't give you all our money, because we gotta, you know, get it for.
And when I started to ask that question, I didn't understand that that was actually a note, and the column, non-spendable, doesn't, to me, really reflect the fact that, you know, we're, we're getting a decent return on it.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just similar in what you're saying, though, Carl. I'm showing that we're at now $12.93 million, $12,939,000. Previous year, we were at $12,165,000.
Yes.
So our fund balance has increased in one year from 2011 to 2012, approximately $800,000.
No, went up.
Right. That's what I meant.
Went up.
And then you go back to 2010, if this figure reflects correlation to the same years, we are just under 9 million in 2010.
Right.
So if you're saying we went down a million in 2010, our actual fund balance is up about $3 million.
No, I was just talking about the liquid part of the fund balance.
I just wanted to understand what you're saying. We're actually much better, even if we're a million, we're $3 million better than we were in 2010. Is that correct?
Well, from a total fund balance, but there is $4.4 million that is not liquid.
Right. You can't touch it. That's a non-spendable, where it was 4.0 roughly in 2011.
Right.
And if I do the math correctly, we're roughly have a 23 percent fund balance.
Okay. What, what happens on, on this page is, for financial purposes, the accounting standards make you tie in three different funds. The 20 percent that I was talking is the budgeted general fund that you just approved tonight, and I apologize for the confusion on that. There's two different terminologies for general fund. You have your general operating fund, but the accounting standards say if there's funds that don't have their own revenue source, they have to be folded in for reporting purposes, and that is your revolving fund and your budget incentive fund. So they have fund balance in them, and it's, and your reports are reported separately, but for financial purposes are pulled together. That's, that's the reason, between the 23 percent and the 20.
And I, I think the graph on page 10 is, is really impressive, because you see from 2003 to 2008, our budget, both in terms of revenues and expenditures, are going up substantially every year, and since that point to now, it's been going just the opposite direction. It's being, it's going down, but the county's still been able to balance their budget each of those years, which I agree speaks, speaks very well for the.
You've adjusted your expenditures to, to match your revenue, and I think that's very good.
Well, the testament to our bond rating's been increased the last three years, and I can tell you, it's always one of my messages that, that when companies come in, and the financial stability of St. Clair County, our bond ratings have increased, you know, because they always look at, because how many governmental agencies have had their bond ratings increase in the last three years? Not a lot. So when these companies.
Especially in Michigan.
Yes, yeah, especially in Michigan. So that is, that is an extremely strong message when these, when these companies are considering you.
Any other questions for Paul, though? Just a motion to receive and file the report.
At this time, I would move to receive and file the 2012 audit findings presented by Stuart Boulay and Whipple.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to work with you.
Okay. Item number B, the 2014 Mental Health Court Grant.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Fiscal Year 2014 Contract in the amount of $216,960.
Second?
Discussion.
Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatap?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes.
Item C, the Pitney Bowes Postage Machine for the Health Department.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move the approval of the agreement with Pitney Bowes for postage equipment at the Health Department for a five-year term with a value not to exceed $14,731.80.
Support.
Net, you want to say anything about it? I'm either. Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatap?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes.
Item number D, the 2014 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant subcontract with Blue Water DRP LLC in the amount of $21,302 for the term of 10-1, 2013 through 9-30, 2013.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item number E, the 2014 marine safety grant application.
This time, Commissioner Bone might ask to approve the 2014 marine safety program grant application in the amount totaling three hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item number F, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority reappointments.
At this time, Chairperson, I would like to make a motion to reappoint John T. Monty, District Six, and Frederick Babcheck, District Seven, to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors, each for a three-year term, expiring ten thirty-one, 2016.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number G, the 2014 Mental Health Court Grant subcontract with St. Clair Community Mental Health Authority. Chairman Bone, I'd like to move that the board of commissioners approve the Michigan Mental Health Court Grant subcontract agreement with St. Clair County Community Mental Health in the amount of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and one dollar and eighty-two cents for a term of October first, 2013, through September thirtieth, 2014. Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item H, the library ADA restroom project.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to award the library restroom construction project to Ainsworth Custom Construction in an amount to not to exceed fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Allison? All right. Get you a nicer bathroom. Roll call.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Do you want to, you can go up there.
Um, early this year in 2013, we received a, a letter of concern from a patron who was having difficulty accessing the bathrooms in the, in the main library here in downtown. The building is, was constructed in the sixties. The bathrooms are grandfathered in. We've done the best that we can with making them accessible. In working in partnership with the county maintenance department, we have been able to identify some space that we can create a true ADA-accessible restroom on the main floor, and to try to make, you know, the library much more user-friendly for all of our communities. So, it was our intent to try to get that completed this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Be unisex?
Yes, and as well as, we'll be calling it a family bathroom.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item number I, the Michigan Maternal Infant and Early Childhood Home Visiting Program.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, I'm sorry, wrong. This is eleven.
Aye.
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 Aye. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the Michigan Material and Infant and Early Childhood Home Visiting Program Project Grant in the amount of eighty thousand.
Support. Uh, there's no match on that. Roll, I'm sorry, David?
Just a couple of questions. Oh, you're here, and I wrote down a couple. They got the total cost of eighty thousand, but in there, who controls the hub, and what's going to be the cost of new software if it's needed?
Uh, the hub grant has been worked on for a couple of years. Michigan Department of Community Health has provided us ongoing funding to develop this plan. The hub is being developed, including software and central intake systems by Port City Communications. That is, that is our selected vendor. The hub itself, the database, and the hub itself is collectively owned by the leadership group of the home visiting coalition, i.e. the county.
Okay. Because if I read this, went through it, Rees is involved in this also?
Yes, there, it's a multi-collaborative partnership.
Is there any funding coming from them?
No, there's no funding from anyone other than the grant.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Okay, moving on. Item number J, the Michigan Consumers for Healthcare Navigator Agreement.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the agreement with the Michigan Consumers for Healthcare for Local Community Navigator Services for a term of ten four, 2013, through eight fourteen, 2014, in the amount of fifteen thousand.
Second.
Questions for, uh, doctor? Okay. Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item number K, the day treatment, night watch, and public guardian manning tables.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to increase the day treatment, night watch manning table by one part-time direct care staff, the public guardian manning table by one part-time case manager, and to reduce the family division manning table by one full-time clerk, typist, one position.
Support. Uh, Gary, I'm going to put you up there. I just got, actually, some other questions for you, unrelated. How was the, when did we kick off the new program?
About eight weeks ago.
About eight weeks ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
And as the dust has settled, we found that we're about one part-time position short with all the duties that have been reassigned. And so, that's what this request is for.
Okay. Any other questions for Gary at all? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item number L, the SAW grant application.
Eleven L? Yep.
This time, I move to adopt Resolution thirteen dash thirty-one, authorizing the stormwater asset management and wastewater grant agreement for the research, development, and demonstration project expansion design and engineering of the landfill in the amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And additionally, to adopt Resolution thirteen dash thirty-two, authorizing the stormwater asset management and wastewater grant agreement for the landfill asset management plan in the amount of two hundred and three thousand seven hundred and eight dollars.
Second.
Matt? Questions for Matt?
Um, good evening, Commissioners. I was at the DOC meeting last month and presented a discussion of these SAW grants to you. What we've done in that, in that, since that time, has come up with some hard numbers of, that we'd like to ask for within these two grants. The first one for the design engineering for our new RDDP in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And for the asset management plan, which if you recall, will be for three separate pieces, the landfill itself, the leachate pretreatment system, and the septic receiving and holding system. And we've come up with a number for that, for the asset management plan grant of two hundred and three thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. As a reminder, these are a ten percent match, and that money will come out of the landfill fund.
Uh, just to kind of, you're going to see this SAW grant thing come before you a lot. Back ten years ago, the state of Michigan bonded for two billion dollars for clean water initiative type of things. The restrictions were so difficult, I guess, on them, that there was seven hundred million dollars in leftover monies. And, because Phil Pavel gave us an update on it, that they changed some of the legislation to actually soften up the purse strings, I guess, if you like the choice of words. So, they're going to get this money on, on the street. So, you're going to see this SAW grant thing is, I think, going to be a regular deal. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item M, the St. Clair County Library System Strategic Plan Agreement.
I think this is the time I was trying to make the previous motion, but I, I would move that the agreement between the St. Clair County Library System and the Metropolitan Planning Commission for the development of a three- to five-year strategic plan in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand two hundred dollars be approved. Support. Discussion. Questions at all for Allison? You want to talk on it?
The library system has done, in my experience, my time with the library, three strategic plans. And the, the first two that I was involved with, I know that we had spent about twenty-six thousand dollars each time for the consultant to assist us through that process. This time, when we did our RFP, the bids came back, and the library board was, made the decision to refuse all bids based on a number of reasons. First of all, the, the cost, of course, was between twenty-five thousand dollars and forty-three thousand dollars, which was quite a bit for a, for a plan consultant. Also, those bids included an inordinate amount of staff time. And we can use that staff time, and we can also partner with our very talented Metropolitan Planning Commission and use their knowledge of our local communities and our, and our local demographics, and to, to build a strategic plan for the library system. We were very impressed, and I think the library board was very impressed with the product that was produced for the health department. And in conversation with Dr. Mercatant, she said the experience that she had working with Metropolitan Planning was, was very positive. And so, I think the library board was very pleased to be able to work with Metropolitan Planning, should the commission feel that it, that would work out well.
John.
Howard?
Just a comment. As the board member on Metropolitan Planning, I do know that they've received a number of real accolades for their work, not just with the health department, but with many of the townships, helping them develop their plans, as well as some of our cities in the county. So, to see you come on board with this, I, I think you'll be very pleased with the product they produce.
I think I, anything else? Roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. The DPW operating agreements?
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the extension of the leachate pretreatment system operating agreement, St. Clair County Department of Public Works, in amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a period of ten oh one of 2013 through twelve thirty-one, 2014.
Support.
And, gentlemen, I have a PowerPoint. I'll just hit the high points of this. I trust you've had the opportunity to review the memo that I submitted to you. If you recall, the pretreatment system was built in 2010. We started operating it in very late 2011. And all our financial evaluation of how the system works, we balance it against this five and a half cent per gallon price that it costs us to haul away the leachate off-site and treat it. In 2012, we averaged a little over eight hundred thousand gallons per month treated through the system. And you can see here, this year, we're well above that. And there's a number of reasons for that. We generated a little bit more leachate in 2013, but also the plant, the plant operation got better, got smoother, got more efficient. So, we've made some progress in that regard. This graph is also in your memo, and you can kind of see the increase over time in the amount of leachate that we've processed. We had a spike in spring of this year, because we had a couple of pretty wet months, plus we had some, we were beginning our open cell, our new cell construction. That gave us some additional stormwater. We couldn't divert and had to process. But you can, we, we're a little over the one million gallon per month point, and I kind of foresee that flattening out as the, the mean on that graph shows, and staying at that level for quite a while.
Before you jump off that, do you have any problems processing two million in that particular given time?
No.
So, your system will handle that without any problem?
It did. The system itself is designed to handle a hundred thousand gallons per day. And about right now, we're doing between thirty and forty thousand gallons per day, depending upon the generation out of the land.
Mr. Chair?
Howard?
Does that mean that we haven't had to contract any leachate to be hauled away?
We have on three separate occasions over the last year or so, for a day or two, when the, when there was an issue with the plant, that we simply couldn't operate it. So, and as a matter of fact, last week, I think we had seven loads, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday, when we had some issues with, with the system that dictated we couldn't operate the facility. But very little. Stuff breaks. Yeah. I, I understand. The agreement that's before you attach to the memo is purely for the fees assessed to us by the DPW to operate and maintain the plant. Those charges include labor charges, chemical purchase, lab fees, general supplies, and things of that nature, basically time and materials to operate the system. However, there's also other expenses that we have with the system, other than what we pay the DPW folks. We've got utility costs for electricity and propane. We've got sludge handling. Sludge is a byproduct of the facility that we have to handle. We, what we do is, we offload that into a tanker truck, and we take it up on the landfill and recirculate it. There are sewer reach fees with the, with the township for use of the sewer system that we're assessed. And what's not listed here is that if we have any exceedances, the city of Port Huron might certainly assess us a fee. We haven't had that issue to date, though. But the overall point I want to make is that the cost of pretreatment has decreased since we started operating the facility. This table's also in your memo, and I broke up the operation in terms of half-year portions. The first period, from January to June of last year, you can see how much we processed, what the total cost of the DPW was, and what that equates to in a unit cost per gallon. And then you can see at the bottom that we've, the DPW, not we, but the DPW has improved their performance and improved the operation of the facility such that we've caught that cost, cut that cost by about a third. We're down to about two cents a gallon, and continuing to make some progress below two cents. So, we're making good progress. This summarizes that point, but the second bullet item on this slide, when you roll in the other expenses, they're about another one-third above, another fifty percent, I'm sorry, over what we pay the DPW. That total cost has gone from four and a half cents roughly to about three cents in that last period. So, if you compare that three cents per gallon to the five and a half cents per gallon over the first period of this year, we're getting to where we wanted to be. We always kind of targeted, and we're thinking we were going to be about, cut our cost in half on the cost of treating our leachate or disposing of it. And we're, we're getting there. We're getting pretty close to that, so. When you run the equivalent savings out, and of course, this does not consider debt service, which kicks in next year, which is about two hundred thousand dollars per year. So, we'll still be under what we were, but, you know, it's not quite as nice as this picture. Total equivalent savings over the last year and a half, over those three periods, is over six hundred thousand dollars relative to what it would have cost to haul that amount of leachate off-site. So, there have been some significant savings we've realized. However, we are still tweaking the plant, and we are still seeing how to optimize operation. Kirk's guys have been working very diligently at that over the last year. So, the DPW and the landfill, together, we both feel that we're not quite to that steady state, we have our costs nailed-down point, such that we could go to a unit cost contract. Ultimately, we would like to get to the point where we can say two cents a gallon, or one point eight cents a gallon, or whatever we think it might be, or two and a half. I don't know. But we're not quite there yet. We're still optimizing the plant. We still have some bugs to work through and tweak. So, in that agreement, what we're requesting is an extension of the T and M basis of payment to the DPW through the end of next year. And hopefully, as we approach the end of next year, we'll reach a steady state point, comfortable enough, that we can come back to you with a unit cost. comfortable enough that we can come back to you with a unit cost contract. Questions from Adam at all?
I have a question for you and I've never asked this. Is there any potential to use that facility to process other leachate or could a hauler come to us and pay us to treat the leachate?
Well, it's specifically designed for leachate, so it would depend completely on what that material makeup was. Because the plant is designed to reduce ammonia levels, reduce some heavy metals. Is there a product out there that, is there a product out there that somebody's got that could come to us and we would charge them to treat? Not that I'm aware of. Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item number O, the room block and cooperative management agreement.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the room block and cooperative management agreement between St. Clair County Hospitality Specialists Incorporated and JB Real Estate Development LLC for the convention center.
Support. Chair. Any questions on this? Okay. Now give me a roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
No.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item P, the 2014 survey and remonumentation grant application.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2014 survey and remonumentation grant application in the amount of $96,976.
Second? Discussion, this is just a grant request, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Item number Q.
This time I'd like to move to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield Annual Renewal Schedule A for a term of 1/01/2014 through 12/31/2014, in an approximate amount of $1,519,764 to be adjusted based on the actual number of contracts.
Board? Do I have a second? Mr. Greitop. Okay. Questions on any of that at all? Anything on roll call?
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item number R, the Community Mental Health Board appointment.
Mr. Chair, I would like to appoint Susan H. White to the Community Mental Health Board, representing District Three for the remainder of a three-year term expiring 3/31/2015.
Board? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number S, Resolution 1329 for the adoption of the 2014 General Fund Budget.
Mr. Boe, at this time I would move to adopt Resolution 13-29, adopting the 2014 General Fund Budget.
Second?
I would just like to make a couple of comments and I've got to give Kerry and Bill a tremendous amount of credit. You guys always hear my sermon, I've been here nine years. These things used to get ugly, people wanted to kill each other. And Bill, I mean, for you guys to be able to do that, when you came before us this year and said, let me work through it and hash things out with the department heads, I can tell you my phone didn't ring once at all regarding this stuff. So that's good stuff. Howard, I know you've been around here longer than I have.
Yeah, I, I just want to remind particularly the constituents out there that, you know, we had a, over a $62 million general fund budget in 2008, we're down to a $54 million budget. And the, hopefully, the revenue that we receive from property taxes, which accounts for about 50, 51% of our budget, that that starts to level off and starts to, start to increase. But even at that, Greg Hill is telling us it's going to be 2020-plus before we get back to getting money from property taxes that we received in 2008.
2026.
2026? Thank you for the correction. Not that it's one I wanted to hear. But, so hopefully, it's going to level off and we can hold a budget in, in that $55 million range, at least for the next few years, and see it gradually increase. But to think it's going to be an easy job for future commissioners, it's going to be a struggle every year.
Well, and I really want to thank all the elected officials too and the department heads, Tim, you know, you guys working with us. You don't even look like a beet red and you have your blood pressure medicine, that's good.
That's great. The, the staff has just been incredible.
I would, I would like to just back up with, with Commissioner Boe and what he said, that Bill and Kerry have done just an awesome job. And when they do the kind of job that they're doing, that really frees up the other seven of us to go about doing other things that we want to get done. We have a lot on our plates and when you guys take this on and bring it to us the way you did, that means we keep working on some other things, so it was super jobs. Thank you, Bill and Kerry, for doing that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great job.
Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item number 12, the administrators' report.
I think I, I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. The, no?
I can, I can read it.
What do you got?
It's a, to adopt Resolution 1330, approving stormwater asset management wastewater grant.
Oh, you know what? We actually did that.
Yeah, and I wondered if, if I was, it was the second.
That's one I had Howard jump on and he didn't.
Okay, all right, okay.
So we're, we're all set on that. 12, administrators' report.
Thank you. I want to bring you up to date on a, on a number of things and let you know a little bit about what will be coming up next month. First of all, at the legislative lunch this week, those of you who attended heard a little bit of information on a piece of legislation that was in a Senate committee. There were hearings held on Tuesday and a vote taken to try and move a, a bill out that would allow the depositing yard waste and compostable material into sanitary landfills that were operated much like ours, a bio reactor, they produced energy based on the gas that was generated in it. Matt did attend that hearing, did testify along with our engineers from CTI. Unfortunately, there were not sufficient votes to move this bill out of committee. They do need one more vote and if somebody changes their vote on that committee, then it will move out to the floor and it will be voted on by the Senate. Our lobbyists are talking with both Senator Pavlo as well as the other committee members to see what can be done to try and change some of those no votes. If there's anything that we can do here, whether it's staff, Matt, or our engineers or any of the board members, we'll let you know. Certainly, we're very interested in this, this could help with gas generation at the landfill significantly, and a number of you have indicated that this would be very beneficial to your local communities and their efforts to try and, and collect and ensure that yard waste are deposited, disposed of correctly.
Actually, I'm going to chime in with you on that because I did have a follow-up phone call with Phil and basically said, you know, what, what's going on with this deal? There's some concerns with some of the senators that have landfills in their counties that they don't want to accept it, I guess for better lack of choice of words. So I talked about, Phil, why don't you look at doing something where the individual counties themselves perhaps would have to vote on it, may have to come before a board commissioners, because a lot of the landfills, you know, are owned by other entities, so have it come before a local issue. Give them some, say, we have it, we're owned, but there's another mechanism there for it, so they're going to revisit that. It didn't, it, it has the ability to be brought back forward and that was a couple of concerns that a couple of senators had expressed to him, so it, so it's not a dead deal.
My, my observation on this is that not all of our communities take their leaves and grass clippings to a compost site. They don't have another alternative. And so I think it would benefit to at least give communities another choice. I think we need to emphasize that with them too.
I'm sorry, Bill, I didn't mean to cut you off, I just.
No, that's good. The, give me a quick update on the convention center, the bids for the carpet and the work on the walls. Remember, this is an existing portion of the convention center that is largely just going to be redecorated. We're going out the second time for bids on the ballroom. The first time we went out for bids, we received no bids. We did have mandatory walkthroughs of the facility, both last week and this week. We've got about a dozen folks that have shown up and have expressed interest in doing this work. The bids on all of that work, except for the electrical, is due, are due tomorrow, the end of the day tomorrow. So we'll have a good idea by close of business tomorrow, if any of those contracts were able to be awarded to any local contractors that have been showing up at the site. Phase two of the project, which is the new construction portion, the blueprints are completed, the specs are completed. What's working, what's going on right now is our construction manager is working on what's called the scope of work, which will be assigned to each trade that would be involved in this particular project. And we hope to have the scope of work completed in the next couple of days and then we'll be hitting the streets with the RFP for phase two of the project. If all goes well, we hope to be here in front of the board sometime in December with a, a bid tally sheet and be making some decisions on how to move forward with the contracts, the construction contracts for phase two of the project. We intend to provide contractors about a month to look over those, those, those specs. They will be very complicated, there's a lot to it, we want to make sure that, they take about a week to review them. Then we'll have a pre-bid meeting, we'll call everybody in, answer any questions they may have. If necessary, go out to the site, talk more about the project onsite, and then they will have about three weeks to prepare their bids and submit them to the county. So we'll keep you informed on how that particular part of the project moves forward.
Bill, on the, on the, on the ballroom ones, can you, are they opening or just receiving that tomorrow?
They'll be opening the bids at, it'll be at 3:30 here.
Did a note sent out to us, who got it?
Yes, what we can do is.
Like we did before.
Hopefully, they'll be clear enough that we can put together a tally sheet real quick, you know, before the close of business tomorrow, and we can send that out to you.
Good, good, thank you.
The United Way campaign is coming to a close for St. Clair County. There are sign-up sheets for those of you who have not filled these out yet, we ask that you do so. Many of you have submitted already, but just a reminder, in December, we expect to have the airport here to provide you with a progress report. The FBO has been onsite, we've made a lot of changes out there and like, they'd like to give you a report on how things are going, share some financial numbers, share some other information and perhaps just some stories about some of the interaction they've had with customers and new customers that we've been able to entice to locate at the airport. Also, at the December meeting, both Matt and Kerry will be sharing with the board an update on the financial plan for the landfill. There's been a lot of changes made since the last time that we made a presentation to the board, but they'll share with you where we stand right now financially at the landfill, what has been going on over the last six or eight months and how that has affected our financial outlook and our financial planning that we need to do for the landfill for 2014. So I know Matt and Kerry are working very hard on updating the presentation they gave to you earlier this year, so that will be before you in December. A reminder that the December 5th and December 12th will be your next meetings, December 5th will be the committee meeting. And then because of the holiday schedule, the full board meeting will just be one week later as opposed to normally, they're held two weeks later. So the 5th will be the committee meeting and the 12th will be the full board meeting. The last thing I want to share with you is an update on what has been going on with the review of the county's 911 plan and the status of funding the 911 program. As you know, probably about five years ago, I think it was probably 2007 or 2008, the board at that time began working with the Public Service Commission to take a look at what could be done to adjust the surcharge that was assigned to devices, both mobile devices and landlines, to try and produce additional income to support the 911 program. That, those petitions before the Public Service Commission were not granted, there was an appeal filed, and earlier this year, a decision was made by the Public Service Commission and there was an agreement to increase the fee for the surcharges on those Late spring of this year, we approached the board and provided you with a, some background on it. The board was asked at the time to adopt a resolution that would put the new fees into effect. Subsequent to that, the board did take the appropriate action and implemented the new fees. As you know, the dispatch center is extremely important to the entire community. As was displayed to you in the article that was in The Voice the last couple of days and the stories that Chairperson Greitop shared with you, we've got an excellent facility, excellent staff out there, they're very highly qualified. Much of the equipment, though, has a lifespan and it does need to be replaced from time to time. For several years, the board has been focusing quite heavily on trying to get our long-term as well as short-term financial plans in order and take a look at what our needs are as well as take a look at what our financial resources may be to help support some of those needs. You've started back up the capital improvement program, we talked quite a bit about that earlier this year when we met and started holding some of our budget meetings. You've committed to ensuring that capital improvement planning continues. Well, included in that document, the CIP that you reviewed earlier, were needs for the 911 system. There are a number of improvements that need to be made and need to be planned for over the next couple of years. Up until earlier this year, we had no idea what our revenue stream would be. It seemed to fluctuate largely because we were awaiting a decision made by the Public Service Commission. That decision has been made. We now have a firm idea of what our financial needs are, both immediate as well as long-term for maintaining the technology as well as the dispatch center. We have a, a good solid idea of what our revenue stream is as a result of the decision by the Public Service Commission. So now it's time to sit down and start looking at an update or a change to the 911 plan. You charged staff a number of months ago to begin looking at this, make sure that we understand what we can and cannot do and begin providing you with information on this. So over the fall and, and early winter, we can revise the plan and we can move forward in 2014. in 2014 with implementing some of the changes that need to be made at the dispatch center. Before you today, you'll see a packet of information. Some of you picked this up today. It's also been sent to you electronically, but what this represents is information that commissioners have asked for, I would say, over the last month from staff. Requests have come in from a number of commissioners. It's gone to the dispatch director, it's gone to our finance staff, it's gone to our staff. And I think it's very important that all of you have the same information available to you, so you can make as informed decision as possible on how do we amend the 911 plan. So that's being presented to you today as a reference or a resource guide. As requests for additional information comes in, we will be providing that to you as well. But what I would suggest that the board begin as soon as possible is begin deliberations to consider how you want the new 911 plan for St. Clair County to look, how you want to structure the delivery of services, the advisory board that provides you with advice on the future needs of the 911 system, as well as the financial portion of the plan, putting together the financial aspect of the 911 plan. That should begin as soon as possible, and hopefully, we provide you with as much information as you may need. I'm sure there's going to be additional information and requests, and we certainly will get that to you as quickly as we can.
And as part of that, as part of going into our closed session this evening, I had asked legal counsel to look at the agreements that we have in place and, you know, give us a legal opinion as far as what we can do and what we can't do. So that's going to be part of it tonight. Howard?
Just an observation. Over the last 12 years thus, since 9/11, when I think every police, fire department was before us saying, you know, "Our communication system, our 911 system is broken, needs to be fixed." We went for the millage to pay for it. That did not work. I think Commissioner Riley headed that up back then, and we weren't successful. And we have struggled ever since we committed to do this, because it needed to be done for the safety of the community. And we have been struggling with how to pay for it. And we were coming up with some less desirable ways of getting funding to pay for the operation of it. So the fact that we now have a stable funding source, we can start making plans, really gives us an opportunity to revisit and revise that original resolution that we passed.
Okay. Any other questions for Bill on anything? I have a motion to receive and file administrators' report.
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Miscellaneous business, seeing none, receive and file.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we receive and file packets that were sent to the commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Board? All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to adjourn and then go into executive session. Motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I'd like to move that the Board of Commissioners go into executive session to review written legal opinions and adjourn immediately thereafter.
Board? All in favor?
Aye.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclercity.org.